Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, May 17 Sioux Falls City Council meeting, first meeting with our newly sworn in councilors. So, welcome to Counselor Bronco, Counselor McCurus, and Counselor Cole. We had a swearing in this morning, or excuse me, this afternoon, went great, and we look forward to serving with you on this dais. So, with that being said, we'll get started by reading our role, please.
Council members Jensen?
Yes.
McCurus?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Here.
Selberg?
Here.
Sale?
Here.
Starr?
Here.
Bronco?
Here.
Cole?
Here.
All right. With us tonight to give our invocation is a good guy, Pastor Phil Tag with the Ransom Church. Pastor Phil, thanks for being here, sir. Ask that you stand for his invocation and then remain standing for a pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, this is the first meeting of this type for, not all of the group, but for this particularly group together, and for those new council members, Lord, thank you for bringing them into this role. This city has voted and has put their confidence in the people around this table, but we know how politics work, and we know that not everyone in the city feels that way. And so, would you help this group lead with grace and humility, with courage, representing what they believe in, what they believe is best for this city? Thank you for the mayor and his willingness to serve a second term, and the city who has also spoken of their confidence in him to lead in that term, Lord. And we trust you for what's ahead, and we trust you with this city. And so, the people around this table, as it turns out, are human, and as humans will make right and wrong decisions sometimes. But would you guide them more often than not to be right, more often than not to be after your heart, and more often than not to be fighting for the best for the city? I pray that when certain members of this council are weak, others would be strong, and that when they are all weak, you would be strong for them, that we would trust in you, listen for your voice, and your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Pastor Tag, for your invocation. We'll move on to item four, our consent agenda. Any changes to be made there? Counselor Starr? Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to pull sub-items two, nine, and 16 from Agenda Item Six and place them on the regular agenda. All right. Noted. Those will be pulled. Any other changes to be made?
Move approval. Second, Jensen.
Okay. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote, please.
Council members Jensen?
Yes.
McCurus?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Bronco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Next item?
Next item is approval of the regular agenda.
Regular agenda. Look for a motion on that, please.
Move to approve. Knightsert?
Second, Jensen.
Motion by Knightsert, seconded by Jensen. Counselor Sale?
Motion to amend by moving item 52 immediately before item 25.
Second, Knightsert.
All right. Motion by Sale, seconded by Knightsert to just move that item as noted. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members Jensen?
Yes.
McCurus?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Bronco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Back to the main motion as amended. Any other amendments or discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members Jensen?
Yes.
McCurus?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Bronco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Before we move on, just want to review public input for tonight. Comments are limited to three minutes per item unless we're adopting it for the final time, in which case, public input is limited to five minutes, and public input is limited to the Agenda Item we're talking about at that time only. So, with that being said, we'll move on to the items that have been pulled from the consent agenda.
Mayor, the next item that, the first item that was pulled was Sub-Item Two from Agenda Item Six, Innovation and Technology. Provide the city of Sioux Falls a network monitoring service for cybersecurity. Amendment to add addition of services. Expertise on demand by Mandiant and M365 Assessment. Paragon Development Systems, $104,209.12.
All right. Counselor Starr?
Yeah, if I could, Mayor, if Director Grigsby could kind of take us through what the changes are in the addendum to the contract, the additions, that'll get us a good start, I believe.
Good evening, Mike. Good evening, Mayor, councilors. Mike Grigsby, Director of Innovation and Technology. As was mentioned, the item that is up for approval today is a rider on top of an existing agreement that was signed in November of 2020 that is providing a managed service for our network monitoring, cybersecurity, network monitoring. This rider allows us to establish a service level agreement, an SLA, that establishes a specific timeline for which the service provider will respond in the event of any breach, any type of security incident. In addition to that, we have the ability to have established not only the, not only the timeline, but the type of response that we can do, we can have for those types of incidents.
Thank you. If I could?
Go ahead.
My concerns about an internal threat. Is it, does this cover us for an employee that sabotages the system, or that type of incident where, you know, I answered the wrong email or download the wrong thing that was someone with a phishing threat, or how does this protect us in that incident?
This is not a protection per se for that type of event, but it would qualify, or that type of event would qualify for this kind of response. So, in the event that we do have an internal action, this would kick in, and we would have that level of response in addition to the additional advisor groups that come with this particular service.
Thank you. Other questions for Mike on this item? In a motion?
Move to approve. Sale?
Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Sale, seconded by Jensen. Is there anyone who would want to speak on this item tonight? Someone's lurking on you.
Bruce Danielson. I've got almost 40 years of work with data security, and what I've noticed in Sioux Falls city government isn't as much a, an issue with outside forces, but inside forces breaching security. This $104,000 could actually be put toward actually doing forensic audits. We have a great deal of, of hard equipment that seems to end up in Omaha, and Sioux City, and Minneapolis, and other points around the state, and that disappears out of, out of the city. Why aren't we concerned about recovering the trucks and the computers and the equipment that disappear around? We're now worried about coming back and having somebody come in and, and say, "Well, I guess we'll spend $104,000 and get a rationalization of why we just lost everything." Pat had a good question. Most security issues happen from within. We only have a couple of things in Sioux Falls city government and all governments of the type of Sioux Falls, and that is, we have employee records, they're sealed. They better be sealed. We have medical records, they're HIPAA records. Those are correct. Those are correctly handled currently. We never have any breaches of that information. We have disciplinary actions of employees. Those have to be protected. The water bills, electric bills of our customers, those are supposed to be protected. I already know that the city has breached its responsibility in those areas. I don't see anything in this contract that's going to stop somebody who has inside knowledge of any of these areas and protecting this information that is supposed to be guaranteed not to leave those computers. And I see people laughing up here and smiling because they already know that it's, that it's being breached, and they don't care. I want to know why we have to spend $104,000 more to do a job that we're already supposed to be doing. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this tonight? All right, we got a motion, a second to approve. Any discussion here? All right, let's take a vote.
Council members Jensen?
Yes.
McCurus?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Bronco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Next item?
Next item is Sub-Item Nine from Agenda Item Six, Water Reclamation. Water Reclamation Facility Improvements. Amendment to Design Agreement. Corallo Engineers Incorporated,
Counselor Starr? Yes, thank you. Director Cotter is making his way up. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and City Council.
Thank you.
I'm Mark Cotter with the Office of Public Works.
Update us where we're headed. This is 5% of the project? That's an addition, or?
It's about 7% of the project. So, just to frame this up, this is a part of the water reclamation project that we've recently had a groundbreaking on. That project will rehabilitate the existing regional plant that was constructed about 40 years ago. This will be the most expansive and thoughtful rehabilitation and expansion of that plant. It will increase its capacity by 50% from 21 million gallons per day to 30 million gallons per day. We all share the same support that wastewater is a critical utility. Planning for this project began in 2018. Part of our project team is Corallo Engineers. They are focused on water and wastewater and have been for the last 85 years. They went through an RFP competitive selection process to do the design, and ultimately, what's in front of you tonight is Amendment Six. This would actually fund, with your support, Corallo's contract for construction administration and inspection. Total amount is $12,599,328. This is 7.1% of the expected GMP, which is just at, from the bricks and mortar piece, about $178 million. This will cover the construction administration and inspection services for the next three years out there. Inspection services will include multiple inspectors, inspectors on-site throughout the project. They'll range from inspecting the structural concrete, process piping, electrical, instrument controls, just to name some of the areas. Engineering services during the construction, this will include reviewing about 2,000 shop drawings. So, the process of building a complex plant like this, just take one valve, for example. The contractor will source the shop drawing with all the specs to demonstrate that it meets the spec. The engineering firm reviews that shop drawing before they can order it, and then they release it for ordering, and then ultimately installation. As it's built, they'll continually update the record drawings, so we have a good, accurate set of plans of what's been built. So, ultimately, the people that sit in our seats, and when they expand it again in 20 years, they'll have a good set of record drawings, and then also be with us through startup and commissioning. So, it's a critical step. It's Amendment Six, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thanks, Mark. Anyone from the public want to speak on this one tonight? All right. Council, you have questions here? Counselor Starr?
I did have one more. Where I was confused is the 12.6 basically isn't new to the project. It's an addition. What's the amendment part of it, I guess, is where I was headed, so?
Yeah, so we've got a completely constrained project of $215 million. This is within that $215 million. And so, they've, they've gone through the design process. We're maturing the 95% plans. This would set us up, because we have released in recent council meetings a limited notice proceed of about just over $73 million, and those constructed activities are scheduled to start very soon, which we are thrilled to get underway.
How much is the difference, though, between what was in the original estimate, or what's, I guess, I'm trying to figure out what's different that it says amendment? This is an amendment to our agreement to them of where we're?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Where we're headed.
No, that's okay. So, the original amendment, we, we just wrote one contract, and then we release or write amendments as we're ready for them to do that next body of work. So, we, we had a series of amendments. The first five amendments ultimately got them through the design. Amendment Six, which is in front of you tonight, is for the entire construction administration and inspection for the next three years. They've also teamed with a local engineering firm, Howard R. Green, so that they can minimize some of those per diem and also utilize, and that was also an RFP process, so they can also use some local resources for their source. So, I'm not sure I'm answering your question, but ultimately-
I'm getting there.
The total project is constrained, and the 7% is well within the industry guidance of what we would expect to see for this professional service.
So, this isn't an overrun or an additional amount. It's just the next step in the process of working-
That's exactly right.
-of what we plan. So, that's where I was trying to get to. Is this new money? Is there additional money? Where are we at? And that's what I was confused, so.
Right. No, thank you. Thank you.
Any, any other questions for Mark here?
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Sale.
Motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale. Discussion. All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members Jensen?
Yes.
McCurus?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Bronco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Next item?
Next item is Sub-Item 16 from Agenda Item Six, Planning and Development Services. Agreement supports the Bishop Dudley Hospitality House by contributing to the reasonable and necessary expenses associated with a warming site and year-round shelter services. Bishop Dudley Hospitality House, $120,000.
Good evening. Kevin Smith with Planning and Development Services. This is our annual operational agreement with the Bishop Dudley House. It goes back to, I believe, 2017. It includes certain aspects of the operation, the expectations we have as a community, some of the measurables, and some of the deliverables. If you have specific questions about our arrangement, working arrangement with Bishop Dudley House, I believe Police Chief Toome is in the audience, and his, his office, as well as fire rescue work very closely with the executive director to address the, the concentration of homelessness in the downtown area. If you have specific questions about that end of it, otherwise, if there's questions about the agreement, I'll try to answer those.
All right. Thanks, Kevin. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item?
Sierra Brucehead, Sioux Falls. You remember when I told you that when the Bishop Dudley was built, they had an option to go to the higher ground in Minneapolis, in Minnesota, to do their concept? So, the Glory House, St. Francis House followed their concept, but the Bishop Dudley didn't. That's why the Bishop Dudley looks like a frickin' war zone out there. I have to testify on their people, Madeline's not here, on their people, on their people that were fighting in the parking lots, domestic assaults, 12 cases I have next month in court. 12 cases. I have to testify on two felonies and arrest misdemeanors. Madeline needs to take responsibility for her own people. We don't have this at the, at the Bishop, at the Glory House, and we don't have it at the St. Francis House. That Bishop Dudley needs to start from the ground up again. Some of you are looking at me like y'all can't relate to it, because y'all probably haven't been to the Bishop Dudley. So, I want all of you council members that represent the rich district, go over there. It's not written right. $120,000, just like landlords, we have to hold them accountable for police calls, okay? She's a tenant in that community. She needs to lessen down those police calls. She needs to take the initiative to take responsibility on these individuals. I don't feel, when I go to court and testify against these people, I don't feel sorry for them. We let the court system do it. We prosecute them, have the police pick them up, do your citizen's arrest, and let the courts handle it. We can't say, "Oh, poor, poor, the poor, the poor people, the poor people." Oh, Madeline's poor people. No. So, when I testify, I don't feel sorry for these people. Let them go to prison, let the court system handle them, because I'm sick and tired of going over there and policing that neighborhood. I know that one, one or two of the council members wants a neighborhood meeting over there. I know that that neighborhood has told me that they want their neighborhood back. I have spoken to landlords that said this is craziness what is happening here. It's all in how you manage your Bishop Dudley. When the director was there, Chad was there, none of this went on there. Where is Madeline tonight? And Madeline was told that this was coming up. Where's Madeline tonight? Nowhere in sight is she. $120,000. The taxpayers are paying more than that on police calls for service. Police calls for service that she can handle. And I'm not saying it's, let me tell you something about Madeline. Okay? I'm gonna tell you something. So, the police pick up the alcohol and they dump it out on the sidewalk. So, I go and I have it on video, and I ask them, "Why are you drinking on the vacant lot?" Because Madeline said we could, because she's tired of the police harassing her individuals. So, she lets them party and, and drink on the empty lot. What is that accomplishing? Because the police can't empty out the beer cans and the alcohol bottles on private property. So, Madeline has them doing this. And I swore for Lord, mark my word, this is happening. I'm so agitated with Madeline.
You don't have to yell.
So, we need to do something about this. We can't be enabling and giving them $120,000. The mayor needs to go in there and look at the situation himself while he's saying, "I'm yelling." What has the mayor done? Has he went over there and spoke to the people in that neighborhood? Absolutely not. The mayor hasn't. We can't just go into the rich sections of, of the town. $120,000. I wish that we could pull up the report to see how much of the taxpayers' money it's costing taxpayers that want their neighborhood back. They want their neighborhood back. Not just council members, but Mayor Tintake, and they want their neighborhood back. What do we can do about it? We don't have enough funding for the police department to be her personal police. There's too much crime happening in the city. She has to take responsibility on how she's going to manage that Bishop Dudley out there. I say, "Don't give her the $120,000 until she can get her poop in the group." But we have to start somewheres. We have to pay for the police calls for service somewheres. I hope Chief Toome touches on the plan that they have for the Bishop Dudley here, but I'm not going to say that it's all on the police department, of lack of, of police presence in that neighborhood. It's how the Bishop Dudley is ran, and she should have followed what she should have followed in Minneapolis, Minnesota.
Anyone else here to speak on this tonight? All right, council. Any questions for Kevin?
Actually, for Chief Toome, if I could.
Counselor Starr, go ahead.
Good evening, council. John Toome, Sioux Falls Police Chief.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, because I know one of the things, the, the Bishop Dudley gets blamed for a lot of, just about everything that happens in the neighborhood that isn't related to the, the Bishop Dudley, but if something bad happens, I know the neighbors automatically assume they're guests or that part of it. So, to say that it's more than, or, there's probably two different things. But we're heading into that time of the year when the activity is going to obviously increase. People are back outside. They're in the park. They're going back and forth between the park, the vacant lot that's owned next door. Help me before my phone starts ringing with the neighborhood. You know, what do I do for them? What, you know, I get it. The, the Bishop Dudley has helped a lot of the neighbors. They don't find people sleeping in their cars anymore, in their garages. It, it's helped in a lot of those areas. But that crowd has gotten a lot tougher over the years. Just in the last couple of years, the people that are there that aren't guests of the Bishop Dudley, but associate with guests. So, as spring hits, help me-
And, and spring's here, and, and we usually see a predictable increase in calls, and I have stats for you that I can share with you. But year by year, you know, we don't measure stats just by the Bishop Dudley, kind of the surrounding area. Statistically, we see it going up. It's a complex issue, probably worthy of a full informational, if that's the appropriate venue to really dig into this. But what I can tell you is that the, the Bishop Dudley predates most of the people in this decision-making body and in this room, as far as how it was implemented, where it's at. And that's kind of where we're at. I can say that since becoming Police Chief, Chief McRavie and I, along with other city members, have really had open communication with the Bishop Dudley, with Madeline, kind of expressed some of our concerns. We've seen action. We've been meeting with their board members. We're taking positive steps really towards creating a vision for that East Eighth Street corridor. And I've spoken with numerous councilors about these issues as well, and I think it's something that evokes a lot of emotion, as we can see. And again, it, it has since it was first implemented. And I think, again, we need to look for some things. I think we recently had a good collaboration with, with the Dudley and with city planning to really create a, a maximum occupancy, right, to really explore that option. We've had good dialogue with them about the diocese in that lot that's right next door, about collaboration between them and the Union Gospel Mission, because the reality is, is that the Dudley takes the hardest cases, the hardest cases that we have, which are really driven by alcoholism and mental health and co-occurring disorders. And the, the solutions for that are not simple. But I think, as mentioned, and as pulling this Agenda Item tonight, as some other statements have been made, it's an issue we have to keep talking about, and we have to keep bringing to the forefront and looking for, for ways to make inroads. Maybe fully understanding that we won't, is it a complex situation, a complex problem, completely solve this, but always be listening, having conversations, not pretending like there's not things for us to work out of that neighborhood.
Thank you.
Other questions for the chief? Counselor McCurus?
Question for Kevin. Kevin, what's the dates of our agreement with the Bishop Dudley? Is this a calendar year agreement, or is this agreement for their July through June of next year?
This would expire, this goes through December 31 of 2022. So, for this calendar year, just to echo, or I guess to build on some things Chief Toome said, that, that we are working with the Bishop Dudley to, you know, establish more rigorous standards and expectations as part of the agreement, probably more so for the, the next agreement with them. But, but certainly, we'd like to see, you know, some metrics to bring, bring back to you. And if there's an opportunity to have an informational meeting, that might be helpful, especially for newer members of, of the city council, as Chief Toome pointed out.
Other questions tonight? Yes, Counselor Knightsert?
Do, do we make one outlay to them once a year, or how, how does that, the funding look?
It's two $60,000 payments, one mid-year, one towards the end of the year.
Would, would there be any, well, when is the next, when is the next payment? Would, when would that be made? Like, later this year?
Yes, I believe it is in June, it's on June 15th. June 15th and November 15th are the two dates.
Is that June 15th one contingent on this particular agreement being approved?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
All right. Other questions tonight?
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Sale.
Motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale. Discussion there on that motion? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members Jensen?
Yes.
McCurus?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Bronco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Next item?
The next item was moved by amendment. It's Item 52, reconsideration of the deferral of a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving diagonal parking on South Grange Avenue. This item was originally considered at the meeting of May 10, 2022, where the council voted eight to zero to defer the item to June 7, 2022. If the motion to reconsider the deferral passes, then the motion to defer to June 7, 2022 will be considered again. The council may vote to again approve the deferral amended or vote it down. If voted down, the resolution itself will be considered by the council. Sponsors, council members Knightsert and Sale.
All right. So, there's a motion, I need a motion to reconsider?
I'm going to make a motion to reconsider. Knightsert?
Second, Sale.
All right. Motion by Knightsert to reconsider, seconded by Sale. We'll take a vote on that, please.
Council members, council members Jensen?
Yes.
McCurus?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Bronco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes eight to zero. So, the motion on the floor right now, then, is to defer the resolution to June 7. So, we have a motion on the floor for that. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item tonight?
Sierra Brucehead, President of the Neighborhood Association. I think, if I'm not mistaken, that the city explained to the neighbors about the parking situation, and so, she will come up and probably tell you that she's in agreement with it. There was some conflict between her and Alex that owns the- was some conflict between her and Alex that owns the building, and they had a little bit of disagreement and understanding, and then the city did not notify both parties in time. So I ask for deferral on that situation here. Um, I'm going to say that the city dropped the ball in notifying these people in time. I understand that Heath Hoffteaser had medical at that time, but he's not the only one in that office that can notify people in that office. So we need to make sure that these individuals, whether it's development, or parking and zoning, or whatever, that they need to be done in the timely manner. So when we have an employee that is sick, somebody can take that caseload on that. Um, it's not a hundred percent satisfactory of the neighbor, and maybe Alex can talk about this a little bit more, but I want the citizens to understand and know that the parking is not gonna be on the taxpayers' money. Alex, Alex Hallback is going to be paying for that. That's not gonna fall on the taxpayers' money for that. Also, to my understanding and knowledge, that those trees will come down off of there. There will not be a fence on that driveway. She was worried about her driveway collapsing from the soil and that. So Alex Hallback, to my understanding and knowledge, would be putting up a retainer wall or something to hold up her driveway. So he has been a very good neighbor to her, to the people next door. I was in favor of this coffee shop. I am always in favor of this coffee shop. It would be good. There was just a miscommunication between city staff and neighbors. So I think that everybody is on the same page, and I think that we came to a, a middle agreement. It's not a hundred percent satisfactory, but we came up to some kind of agreement where they can live with that for the meantime. I don't think there will be any more issues to that nature.
Anyone else here to speak on this tonight? Good evening.
Michael Moore. Having been a tenant with Mr. Hallback and understanding what is happening here, I believe that the development and the re, the revitalization of this building, I think it's very important to offer parking and be able to allow guests to be able to have ease of access to this building. Now, having been a steward of Alex's, he will take very good care of what's happening. He is a good steward of the community, he's a good steward of the community, and I guarantee that this will be a very good success. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? Come on up. Good evening.
Uh, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to first say.
You state your name.
Sorry, Alex Hallback. I'm the property owner of this, the building, and first of all, I'd like to apologize for not being here at last week's meeting. You know, I'm not blaming anybody. I appreciate the city trying to work with me and communicate on the, when, when it would be heard. I didn't learn until kind of late in the day, which, which I could not reschedule my meetings to be here last week. But after that meeting, I did work with Councilmember Nitzer and Sale to bring this back, to be heard, and actually met with the, the neighbors next door to work through some of the issues with the angled parking, the visibility, the fencing and retaining wall issues. And I think that we came to an agreement on the best way to handle that property boundary with, along with the city. So I think the issues that were maybe of concern last week have now been resolved, and I'm hoping that, that this group can approve the proposal for angled parking, so I can move forward with, with developing the space. So, thank you.
Thanks, Alex. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? All right, council, any, any questions for anyone tonight on this? Counsel Nitzer, go ahead.
Uh, I, I would just state that since we've moved to reconsider, right now, the motion on the floor is to defer to June 7th, and I'm going to ask the council to vote no on that, so that we can have a discussion about approving it tonight.
All right.
Thank you.
Other discussion on this? All right, seeing none. As Counsel Nitzer said, the actual motion is the deferral of the resolution of the City of Sioux Falls approving diagonal parking on South Grange to June 7th. So that's what you'd be voting on. So Tom, let's take a vote.
Councilmembers Jensen?
No.
Mercurus?
No.
Nitzer?
No.
Selberg?
No.
Sale?
No.
Starr?
No.
Baranco?
No.
Cole?
No.
Okay, so that fails, eight oh. Want to get a new motion on the floor?
I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Nitzer, seconded by Selberg. Discussion, council. Counsel Nitzer?
Uh, since Heath took the time to be here, maybe he could just explain, or whoever would be appropriate, the, the diagram that we're seeing and what these two cars are depicting. Maybe it's the applicant, too. I'm fine with however we want to do it.
Go ahead, Heath. You're already up here.
Heath Hoffteaser, I'm the traffic operations engineer for the city. Basically, what, so what we're looking at trying to do is approve diagonal parking on the east side of Grange Avenue from Ninth Street to about a hundred and fifty feet to the south. And what we have on this diagram here is kind of sketched in where the diagonal parking spots potentially will be. And if, over on the right side, in the diagonal spot, we have what, what could be the first car parked in the parking spot. And that kind of shows you, it's indented quite a bit from where the vehicles are now. Out on the street, below that, to the bottom of the page, we have another car that's showing what a parallel parking position would be out on the road. And that's just kind of, it's, it's a, kind of to depict the difference between what the parallel parking spots would be versus how the diagonal parking spots would actually be indented a ways in. So it's basically, we're just adding the cars to kind of show what the difference would be.
All right, thanks, Heath. Other questions, Counsel Starr?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Hoffteaser, help me. So there would be four spots, or can you get a fifth one in there before the walk?
Um, they're, they're looking at, it's looking at approximately five parking stalls that they're looking at, so.
That gets that one.
Yep.
Tell me why we're doing the, the walk areas that it's designed. I mean, would we envision someone getting out of their car in the last stall and then walking along the end of the cars to that area? Or why is that part of it required with the diagonal, the, I'm, I'm assuming that's a walk?
Um, that, that's.
Our path?
That's potentially looking at an accessible parking spot out there.
Well, then I can cross off my next question, because I was gonna say, are we adding a place for disabled, a vehicle? So a van or a ramp for, perfect. Thank you.
Other questions tonight on this? All right, got a motion, a second, to approve. Any discussion? All right, let's take a vote then, please.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
Mercurus?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item?
Item 25, new 2022/23 retail malt beverage South Dakota Farm Wine License, requesting off-sale only for Stenzel and Enterprises Incorporated, 5727 to 5729 East 41st Street, CUP not required. Item 26, new 2022/23 retail malt beverage South Dakota Farm Wine License, requesting off-sale only for Stenzel and Enterprises Incorporated, 2705 West 12th Street, CUP not required. Item 27, new 2022 retail wine and cider license and new 2022/23 retail malt beverage South Dakota Farm Wine License for 4CC LLC Buffalo Casino, 5005 West 12th Street, CUP not required, pending final inspection per health. Item 28, request to add video lottery terminals with the new 2022/23 retail malt beverage South Dakota Farm Wine License for 4CC LLC Buffalo Casino, 5005 West 12th Street. Item 29, transfer of 2021/22 retail malt beverage South Dakota Farm Wine License and transfer of 2022 retail wine and cider license from Hin Canon Design and DIY LLC AR Workshop, 2101 West 41st Street, Suite 29B, to JTL LLC AR Workshop, 2101 West 41st Street, Suite 29B. Item 30, transfer of 2022 retail liquor license from Sandtrap Incorporated, 811 South Marion Road, to Pancakes and More LLC, 2715 West 41st Street, CUP not required. Item 31, special one-day liquor license for T-Slat Incorporated to be operated at 4A East 69th Street for a wedding on May 21st, 2022. Item 32, special one-day liquor license for T-Slat Incorporated to be operated at 3400 South, Southeastern Avenue for a retirement party on May 27th, 2022. Item 33, special one-day liquor license for T-Slat Incorporated to be operated at 2510 East 54th Street North for a wedding on May 29th, 2022. Item 34, special one-day liquor license for Highball LLC to be operated at 401 East Eighth Street Parking Lots for Sioux Falls Pride on June 18th, 2022. Item 35, special one-day malt beverage license for Panacea Brewing Company to be operated at 401 East Eighth Street Parking Lots for Sioux Falls Pride on June 18th, 2022. Item 36, special one-day malt beverage license for Friends of the Big Sioux River to be operated at 401 East Eighth Street West Lot for 605 Summer Classic on June 25th, 2022. And item 37, special one-day liquor license for TNT Entertainment to be operated at 337 North Phillips Avenue for a concert on July 16th, 2022.
Hi, Jamie.
Good evening, Jamie Palmer with Licensing, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for items 25 through 37.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone from the public here to speak on any of these items tonight? Counsel, you got any questions for Jamie here?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Starr?
Thank you. Sorry, I have to get packed up. Tell me about 25 and 26, because that one is interesting to me, that it's an ice cream shop. Why are they looking for an off-sale license?
Okay, the, these licenses are being requested for the concession stands at these particular parks for the ballgames. Formally, those licenses were held by Jan Wood with, I think it was ICE, ICE concessions. And so she, they're taking over for her and her licenses. She's gonna work until June 30th, when her licenses lapse, and then they will take over.
Gotcha. That makes a lot more sense than, I was thinking this was along 41st Street in their regular ice cream retail shop, so I get confused by the address. Thank you.
Any other questions tonight?
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Sale.
Motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote, please.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
Mercurus?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item?
Item 38, first reading and ordinance amending the 2006 joint zoning regulations for Lincoln County and the City of Sioux Falls by amending section 158.156(c) commercial district permissive uses. The city planning commission's recommendation to approve failed zero to five, and the county planning commission's recommendation to approve failed zero to five. Recommendation set a date of second reading for the joint Sioux Falls City Council-Lincoln County Commission meeting of Tuesday, May 24th, 2022. Private applicant Dalton Grimias.
Good evening. Come on up.
Good evening. Fletcher Lake Hawk, urban planner with the Department of Planning and Development Services. This item is coming out of the joint jurisdiction with Lincoln County, request by Dalton Grimias to amend the joint zoning regulations for Lincoln County and the City of Sioux Falls. What we're looking for is a motion to set second reading for next Tuesday, which will be down in Canton. We rotate those meetings, and it's their turn, so. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
All right. Anyone from the public here to speak on this? All right, any questions tonight for Fletcher here? Go ahead, Counsel Nitzer.
I have, I have a few questions, but I'll just, to get it started, I'll make a motion to set a date of second reading for the joint Sioux Falls City Council-Lincoln County Commission meeting on Tuesday, May 24th.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Nitzer, seconded by Jensen. Counsel Nitzer?
Uh, the first thing that was interesting is that it appears that in the joint jurisdiction, a private applicant can bring a, a request to change the law? This is a private applicant here. This isn't?
Yeah, this is someone who is looking to open up a medical cannabis dispensary. And so in the joint jurisdiction area, it was the, the county planner, Toby Brown, determined that they could make the application.
Okay. And you, you can potentially bring this. It might be more appropriate for the second reading when there's a public hearing and, and the stakeholders are there. I guess I, I'm just asking if there maybe would be maps of what were, of what would be impacted with this change? Because what it looks like is, what he's talking about is, there must be, maybe there's something that's a residential property inside of a C-zone, like a commercial zone in the county, and that's disqualifying a location. He might want to do a marijuana establishment. And so maybe just like some exhibits of what we're talking about, how many of these uses are around, and that would be helpful. Do I have it pretty much right of what he's looking for?
Yes, it is one applicant who is, and there is one dwelling, which is turning out to be the issue. And so we will make sure that at the next meeting, we have those maps available.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions tonight? Counsel Seal?
Mr. Mayor, for the new council members, the first reading approval to go to the joint meeting. Next week, we go to Canton, the fourth meeting of the month after our informational, and then we can act collectively and separately on this item. So it takes both of us, the county and the city, at this time, to do it. So it's appropriate to approve this one at first reading, even though you see that it's been recommended to deny.
Yeah, thank you. Great point. Other discussion here? All right, let's take a vote then on the motion to set a date of second reading at the joint meeting.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
Mercurus?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Okay, that passes eight to zero. Next item?
Item 39, first reading and ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending chapter 153, annexation policies. The planning commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, June 7th, 2022. Sponsors, the mayor.
Anyone gonna speak to this? Looks like it might be withdrawn, Jason?
Yeah, I believe this and the next two items in your red notes are me requesting to be deferred.
Withdrawn.
Be deferred?
Withdrawn, excuse me, withdrawn.
Okay. Can I have a, well, anyone want to speak on this? All right, can I get a motion to withdraw this item?
I'll make a motion to withdraw. Jensen?
Second, Nitzer?
Motion by Jensen, seconded by Nitzer. Discussion? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
Mercurus?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item, item 40.
First reading and ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending chapter 157, subdivisions, subchapter, concept plan. The planning commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, June 7th, 2022. Sponsors, the mayor.
All right, looks like there's also a desire to have this item withdrawn, so I'd look for a motion on that.
Motion to withdraw. Second, Jensen.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to withdraw item 40. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
Mercurus?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero, and item 41, please.
Item 41, first reading and ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending chapter 157, subdivisions. Planning commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, June 7th, 2022. Sponsors, the mayor.
Uh, and there's also a desire to withdraw this item, so I'd look for a motion to that effect, please.
So moved, Jensen.
Second, Selberg.
Motion by Jensen, seconded by Selberg to withdraw 41. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
Mercurus?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Onto item 42, please.
Item 42, first reading and ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located south of East 85th Street and east of South Minnesota Avenue, from the AG Agriculture and C4 Commercial Regional to the RE1 Apartment Residential Low Density and C4 Commercial Regional Districts, number 16121-2022, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. The planning commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, June 7th, 2022. Private applicant Akerson Properties, HA Akerson.
Jason?
Good evening, Mayor. Counsel Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application, and the owner is HA Akerson. It's located south of West 85th Street and east of South Minnesota Avenue, just to the east of the Walmart. It's about 3.14 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking to zone some recently The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking to zone some recently annexed property at the south portion of this development.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counsel, you have any questions for Jason here?
Move approval?
Second, Cole.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Cole to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, June seven. Any discussion there? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Council members, Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item forty-three, first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located six twenty-three East Twenty-first Street from the R.S. Single Family Residential Suburban District to the R.H.P. Single Family Residential Historic Preservation District, number one six one six six dash twenty twenty-two, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, June seventh, twenty twenty-two. Private applicant, Kyle Hilsebeck.
The applicant and owner here is Kyle Hilsebeck. It's located at six twenty-three East Twenty-first Street. It's just east of the McKenna Park Tennis Courts. It's about point one six acres in size. The purpose of this request is this applicant is looking at rezoning to a, to this lot, excuse me, to a similar single-family residential historical preservation as we had, as we did about two years ago for roughly eighteen lots within this existing neighborhood.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counselors, any questions here?
Move approval?
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, June seven. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members, Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item forty-four, first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located nineteen oh-three and nineteen oh-nine East Tracy Lane from the R.T. One Single Family Residential Traditional, Traditional District to the R.D. One Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District, number one six two one seven dash twenty twenty-two, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, June seventh, twenty twenty-two. Private applicant, GND Har Construction LLC, Gary Har.
The applicant here is Gary Har. The owner is Harold Godin. It's located on Tracy Lane. It's about point five zero acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the north lot here already contains an existing twin home, and then the applicant is looking at constructing another twin home on that south portion of the lot.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Any questions here, counsel? Look for a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, June seven.
So moved, Sale.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Sale, seconded by Jensen. Discussion here? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Council members, Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item forty-five, first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located north of West Sixtieth Street North and east of North Career Avenue from the I-one light industrial and I-two heavy industrial districts to the C.N. Conservation, I-one light industrial and I-two heavy industrial districts, number one six two two seven dash twenty twenty-two, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, June seventh, twenty twenty-two. Private applicant, S.E.H. Incorporated, Carrie Franklin.
The applicant is Carrie Franklin. The owner is Brian Bachman. It's located at the northeast corner of North Career Avenue and West Sixtieth Street. It's about eleven point five three acres in size. The purpose of rezoning is they're just looking to rezone for the, some drainage, existing drainage that they'll need to do for their subdivision.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on item forty-five tonight? All right, counsel, any questions? Look for a motion, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, June seven.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen on that. Any discussion? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Council members, Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item forty-six, first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located south of West Maple Street and east of North La Mesa Drive from the C.N. Conservation, R.S. Single Family Residential Suburban, R.D. One Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban, R.D. Two Residential Suburban Town Home and L.W. Live Work Districts to the C.N. Conservation, R.S. Single Family Residential Suburban, R.D. One Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban and R.D. Two Residential Suburban Town Home and L.W. Live Work Districts, number one six two nine seven dash twenty twenty-two, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, June seventh, twenty twenty-two. Private applicant, D.G.R. Engineering, Jesse Morris.
The applicant here is Jesse Morris. The owner is Eric Christiansen. It's located west of North Marion Road and south of West Maple Street. It's about seventy-two acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is this is part of the Minnesota Ave, Avenue Reconstruction, where this strip center is losing all of its on-street parking. The applicant does own both these properties, and there's two existing houses that will be moved off the property onto other lots, and then the applicant is looking at constructing a parking lot to, to handle some of that trap, or some of those parking spaces that they lost on Minnesota Avenue.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on forty-six? Counsel, any questions on this item? All right, look for a motion, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, June seven.
So moved, Sale.
Second, McCorris.
All right, motion by Sale, seconded by McCorris. Any discussion there? All right, all those, let's take a vote then, please.
Council members, Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Move to item forty-seven, please.
Item forty-seven, first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located south of West Maple Street and east of North La Mesa Drive from the C.N. Conservation, R.S. Single Family Residential Suburban, R.D. One Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban, R.D. Two Residential Suburban Town Home and L.W. Live Work Districts to the C.N. Conservation, R.S. Single Family Residential Suburban, R.D. One Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban and R.D. Two Residential Suburban Town Home and L.W. Live Work Districts, number one six two nine seven dash twenty twenty-two, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, June seventh, twenty twenty-two. Private applicant, D.G.R. Engineering, Jesse Morris.
The applicant here is Jesse Morris. The owner is Eric Christiansen. It's located west of North Marion Road and south of West Maple Street. It's about seventy-two acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're doing some minor boundary adjustments for the proposed Jefferson Heights residential development.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on item forty-seven? Questions tonight, counsel, on this item? All right, look for a motion to set a second reading for Tuesday, June seven here. I so move, Baranco?
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Baranco, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion there? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Council members, Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item forty-eight, first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located north of East Madison Street and east of Veterans Parkway from the C.N. Conservation, R.S. Single Family, Family Residential Suburban, R.D. One Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban, R.D. Two Residential Suburban Town Home, R.A. Two Residential Apartments Moderate Density, L.W. Live Work and C-two Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar Districts to the C.N. Conservation, R.S. Single Family Residential Suburban, R.D. One Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban, R.D. Two Residential Suburban Town Home, R.A. Two Residential Apartments Moderate Density, L.W. Live Work, C-two Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar and I-one Light Industrial Districts, number one six three oh four dash twenty twenty-two, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, June seventh, twenty twenty-two. Private applicant, Nielsen Development LLC, Kelly Nielsen.
The applicant and owner here is Kelly Nielsen. It's located north of East Madison Street and east of North Veterans Parkway. It's about eighty-eight acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is to make some zoning boundary line adjustments in this East Prairie addition.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counsel, any questions here?
Move approval?
Second, Jensen.
Okay, motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to set a second reading for Tuesday, June seven. Is there any discussion on that? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Council members, Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Move to item fifty.
Item fifty, a resolution advising and giving consent to the appointment of members to certain citizen boards, those being Nick Kapberman to the Building Board of Appeals, Doug Bartel and Beth Wrestler to the Civil Service Board, and Joan Pankinen to the Sioux Falls Regional Emergency Medical Services Authority.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on any of these folks or this item here? All right, I just need a motion to approve these folks.
I so move, Baranco?
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Baranco, seconded by Jensen to approve item fifty. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members, Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Move to item fifty.
Item forty, a resolution advising and giving consent to the appointment of members to certain citizen boards, those being Nick Kapberman to the Building Board of Appeals, Doug Bartel and Beth Wrestler to the Civil Service Board, and Joan Pankinen to the Sioux Falls Regional Emergency Medical Services Authority.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on any of these folks or this item here? All right, I just need a motion to approve these folks.
I so move, Baranco?
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Baranco, seconded by Jensen to approve item fifty. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members, Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
The next item is the Notice of Transfer of Appropriations on the Memorandum dated April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
All right, any new business, counsel, tonight? All right, we'll move to, we have a few items ever added after the agenda deadline. We'll start with item fifty-three.
Item fifty-three, the city council concurs with the Minnehaw County Commission's recommendation for approval of the following abatement, parcel five three nine four one for twenty twenty-one property taxes in the amount of eight hundred forty-three dollars and thirty-six cents. Reason, structures have been removed after the assessment date upon verification by the Director of Equalization.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on item fifty-three? All right, counsel, can I get a motion to approve this item?
So moved, Cole.
Second.
Ooh, I'm going to give that to Sale. Motion by Cole, seconded by Sale. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members, Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.[1416.23]
Motion by Cole, seconded by Sale. Uh, any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members Jensen.
Yes.
McCorris.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Baranco.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. I'm gonna turn the gavel over to, uh, council chair Selberg for the final items, uh, which will be, uh, council elections. So Counselor Sale, the meeting's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tom?
Next item, item fifty-four, election of city council chair. Mr. Chair.
This time we'll take public input. Seeing none, we'll go ahead with the nominations. Do I hear any nominations for council chair? Counsel Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to nominate Counselor Sale as our chair.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, McCorris.
Okay, any other? Do we take the rest of the nominations?
Well, just, uh, repeating that it was, um, Counselor Selberg and McCorris nominating Sale.
Got it.
Chair.
Sale has been nominated by Selberg and McCorris. Read that. Mover in a second can speak on behalf of their nominee. Counselor Selberg?
Be happy to. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I want to nominate, uh, Counselor Sale for a second term. He's done a terrific job in the first term. Obviously, we've got a, uh, number of new folks joining us this evening for the next year. And, uh, I think Counselor Sale has proven to be an effective leader, and it'd be a good time to keep him on board as we, uh, kind of move into new waters. So, there's my nomination.
Thank you. Second has a chance to speak if he'd like to.
I think over the last year, Sale's just done a great job of showing practical focus. In a time of change, I think it's important to have some consistency from the previous leadership as well.
Thank you. Is there any other nominations for chair? Any other nominations? I hear none. Uh, there will be, after nominations made, the presiding officer, it allows the nominees to speak. That would be me. I'd say, thank you for the nomination. I will do my very best. This time, is there any discussion? Can we have a roll call vote, please? You have to announce your pick.
Jensen. Sale. McCorris.
Sale.
Knightsert.
Sale.
Selberg, Sale. Sale.
Sale.
Har.
Sale.
Baranco.
Kurt Sale.
Cole.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, looks like I will be serving another term as chair. Thank you very much for your support. Next item.
Next item, item fifty-five, election of city council vice chair.
Is there any public input on this subject? Seeing none, open up for nominations. Counselor Knightsert?
Uh, I would like to nominate Counselor Alex Jensen to be vice chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And motions made by Counselor Knightsert and seconded by Selberg for Alex Jensen for vice chair. Counselor Knightsert, do you have a statement?
Uh, yes. So, uh, as Counselor Selberg had indicated, I think in light of the turnover we've had on the council, having continuity uh, is, is a good thing. Uh, the most important role really of the council vice chair is to be the staff liaison and the personnel manager for the city council. Uh, that person needs to be an advocate for our staff first and foremost, and our staff makes us effective. Counselor Jensen has proven to be a strong and powerful advocate for our staff and to, uh, make sure that they have the tools that they need and the support they need. Uh, so I think he's, he's done a good job, and he deserves another year, and, uh, I hope he'll join me in supporting his nomination as vice chair. Thanks.
Thank you. The second has a chance to make a statement. Counselor Selberg, do you have a statement or?
I would reiterate pretty much the same thing that we'd said for both our chair and vice chair. I just think it's a good time to keep leadership as it is. They've done a fine job, so just keep up the good work for this upcoming year.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none. The nominee, Jensen, has a chance to make a statement.
I'll do my best. Thank you.
Any other discussion or rebuttal? Hearing none, can we have a vote, please?
And please respond with the name of the preferred nominee. Council members Jensen. Jensen. McCorris.
Jensen.
Knightsert.
Jensen.
Selberg. Jensen. Sale.
Jensen.
Starr.
Jensen.
Baranco.
Alex Jensen.
Cole.
Jensen.
Thank you. We have chosen Alex Jensen to be the vice chair. Congratulations. Next item, please.
Item fifty-six, election of fourth member to the city council operations committee.
Any public input on this subject? Seeing none, I'll look for nominations, please.
Mr. Chair.
Counselor Knightsert?
I would like to nominate Counselor Sarah Cole as the fourth member of the city council operations committee.
Is there a second?
I second.
Give it to Counselor Baranco. So we have a nomination by Knightsert, seconded by Baranco for Sarah Cole to be the fourth member of the operations committee. Counselor Knightsert?
Uh, yes. So the operations committee is made up of the chair, the vice chair, the outgoing chair, and one at-large member. Uh, three of us have, uh, a good amount of tenure, and I think having, uh, one of our newly elected representatives will provide some fresh perspective and some balance and some, some new ideas. So I think, uh, Counselor Cole would be an excellent addition, and I, uh, would ask for your support.
Thank you. Second has a chance to make a statement.
I think it would be a terrific decision to have Sarah Cole in this position. Um, as you men- as my fellow councilman mentioned, she brings a new perspective to this. It'd be terrific to have her, um, opinions and ideas reflected, uh, new ideas that would en- only enhance and enrich the already effective membership of that committee.
Thank you. Is there any other nominations? Any other? Counselor Cole, you have a chance to make a statement?
I'm very grateful for this opportunity. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Seeing no other nominations, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Council members Jensen.
Cole.
McCorris.
Cole.
Knightsert.
Cole.
Selberg.
Cole.
Sale.
Cole.
Starr.
Cole.
Baranco.
Sarah Cole.
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 Thank you. We have chosen Sarah Cole as the fourth member of the operations committee. At this time, we'll move to general public input. Reminder, you have yeah, you have three minutes. The public is welcome to speak on any topic that did not appear on the regular agenda.
Greetings. I'm David Zalkitis, and before I get going into tonight's top- into tonight's topic, I'd like to welcome the new members of the city council, and for the sake of completion, I'd like to welcome the existing members back. All right, so I'm here to talk about prayer. This is, uh, part of my continuing series, and tonight I will present a prayer for community. This one started years ago when I was caring for my mother. I wanted to write something that I might use if I would sit in the mayor's seat there and, and start a city council meeting. And then people said, hey, that sounds like a prayer. So I said, all right, I'll turn it into a prayer, and here it is. Dear Lord, we ask that you wrap our troubled world in your loving arms. Help us spread your gifts to the people we meet daily. Touch us with your spirit so we live as your loving children. Gather your people together in the spirit of community and fellowship with your loving light. We pray that you guide our government into your will, guide our allegiance to the truth. For truth enables liberty, justice, and compassion for all. Foster our loyalty to the people our governments must serve. Help us protect the earth, our temporal home, and all the wonderful life that surrounds us. Guide our allegiance to world community, our country, our American Constitution, and the rights it protects. Help us enrich our earthly lives through science, art, and industry. Please touch our leaders with wisdom, empathy, and the courage to do your will on earth as it is in heaven. We ask you to lead us in the work of this council as we dedicate our efforts to the people of Sioux Falls and manage city affairs for the betterment of all. We seek your serenity and counsel in drawing the world's religions together in compassion and spiritual growth while we seek eternal peace, grace, and love. Thank you, heavenly Father, for your cherished wisdom, your guidance, and your infinite love. In this, we pray through the glory of God. Amen. Now, I always have to have a landscape on here. Just so that we all leave in a nice peaceful tone of voice, you know, and this, I think, is a, at that falls park, the peace of nature. So with that, everybody, y'all have a good evening.
Thank you. Any other public input?
Chester DeYoung, Sioux Falls. Back in two thousand nine-ten, when the city proposed and supported the installation of Grant Street, the zoning requirements that they agreed to with, by the city and the adjoining property owners was that, uh, villas were to be installed at five thousand East Grant Street. The city engineer in charge of the meeting, when asked what could happen to that land if the villas did not happen, said four plexes, maybe eight. That was it. The zoning requirements at this time allowed for one hundred and one residential units on the property at five thousand East Grant Street. Now, I walk Grant Street five times a week religiously, okay, from Foss to Marquette, and I had never seen any signing, placards denoting that zoning was going to change on that property. Last spring, I ran into the current property owner of the, there, uh, in twenty twenty-one, Mr. Byerly. Uh, we went over what his plans were for the property, and discussion was rather civil. Uh, he indicated they're gonna put a two-hundred-unit apartment complex on there in five buildings uh, with a clubhouse and a pool. His plans were to make it, uh, whatever the market would allow. He was not gonna have low-income property. I indicated, my thought was, my understanding was, you had to have two hard-surface accesses for a building like that, and he said, nope, zoning changed. You can get two hundred units. Uh, we went on from there, pleasant discussion. We finished up, and I turned around, I started, uh, doing a little bit of research. Now, I've got personal and professional contacts from thirty-five years in the construct- construction industry, so I've got a lot of contacts. And I found out, yes, plant- the zoning had changed, and they were able to install a two-hundred-unit apartment complex. To my surprise, without even knowing they changed it, I now get a two-hundred-unit neighbor to work with. Just a little bit of an update, okay? That's just a short, brief history. But, um, since my last appearance here on April fifteenth, Mr. Berg contacted me and indicated the city attorney, uh, said he had to visit with me directly and try and get this thing resolved. He has several traffic counts to perform, and he has to adjust his plan, and he said it might take five or six months. Uh, I don't plan on not attending these meetings because you guys may overlook me. So I will be here. I just won't be here as much. I'm gonna cut it down to once a month. Uh, and I will tell you also that the assistant city attorney contacted me to verify Mr. Starr, or Mr. Uh, Berg actually contacted me. So you guys have a great night. Uh, we're making progress, but thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public input tonight?
Mike Zirrds of Sioux Falls. I just wanted to touch a little bit on some comments I made last week. I think that Gus, Gus thinking of some stuff that been another, another person been talking about, I think it's something that we should be looking at as a city and to help the, to help more for affordable housing and mobile, home residence of mobile, mobile home parks. I think, I think we can, if we can start looking at amending couple of ordinances for, that deal with wire sewer systems of mobile home parks, I think we can make slight changes that can, that can help those residents as well, and we can kind of gear it towards the affordable, the, the housing maintenance program that we just adopted. I think we can probably look for grant programs, federal or state grants or something to bring up, to generate the revenue. Or we could use TIFs. TIFs might be a, a good option if you want to help encourage them to invest in infrastructure. And a, a, a third thing would be, I mean, we could just slightly change the ordinance a little bit to do something like what Tulsa, Tulsa, Oklahoma did, where they, they put the ordinance where all, they defined mobile homes as dwellings. And if we make an order, we, we make an order that all dwellings should have wire meters attached to the houses, that might be able to residents in monitoring their, monitoring their wiring, their sewer rates. I mean, right now, currently, most of mobile home parks have flat fees, and that might be hurting some of the lo- low-income residents. I think in the name of affordable housing, I think you might want to discuss this a little bit more. I think looking I mean, we, the average cost to probably per mobile home park might be somewhere in the two hundred to four hundred thousand range. So I mean, somewhere in there, we probably look for revenue for that to help the park owners. And then, of course, any program we want, you probably want to make it voluntary, so you'll probably don't want to really force this on the property owners, but going forward, you might want to create some voluntary program where they want to encourage, encourage investing in their meters and stuff. And then so my mom used to, my mom used to manage a park, and then, and I think I've been talking to Greg a little bit about this. And this is some of the things that she found. It took her probably ten years to get her, convince her boss, her property owner, to actually do this. They did, they actually did it twice. The first time they used cheap meters, which didn't really work. They kind of like meters, they call like apartment buildings and stuff. It didn't work, so they had to do it twice. I mean, some of the things that she found, after they, after they did this, that she found a company in Michigan that actually sold the meters, and they actually created the program and software that helped the parks manage everything. And then, and that, that comes with a, with a subscription fee. So I think any program that we do, we put together to help the mobile home parks, I think should be like a volunteer program. And then to help, to property owners invest into the, this water, the, the water sewer billing, like a program or something, and then.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. Thanks.
Anyone else for public input this evening? Seeing none, I would entertain.
Adjourn, Starr.
Motion to adjourn by Starr.
Second, Knightsert.
Second by Knightsert. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Say nay? Meeting adjourned.